Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to our August 26, 2025 City Council meeting. Please stand for invocation by Councilman Wilder and followed by the pleasure of the Legion of United States.
Let us bow heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for Lynchburg City Council, for the citizens, for all the people in our community, giving us blessings, giving us guidance, and believing this organization. Let us give you the glory, let us give you the honor, let us do things that are pleasing in your sight. We speak peace in our community, peace in our streets, we speak love in our country, we pray for our president, our governor, or elected officials, that they will have unity and love for all mankind. Give us the wisdom of you, that we can lead this organization in the way you desire for it to be. Bless our staff and strengthen them and encourage their hearts during this time of situation. Just bless our staff. We love you, we appreciate you, and in your person name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first section is consent agenda, and we have a ton of minutes on there. We met a lot in June. There has been a request from council members to pull all those minutes for time for review and offer some feedback. So tonight's city council agenda is actually divided into three sections: public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is public hearings. These are required by law or dictated by council procedure. Staff will give a presentation, the public can give comments, individuals have three minutes to speak, the speaking for a group, you have five. Group speakers must say which group they represent. Each group gets one spokesperson. Each speaker must say their name and their locality of residence. After public comments, the public hearing will close, and the matter will rest with council.
So, we're not, I mean, I know it's our standard practice, but we have a number of minutes here where some of which are, I mean, school board interviews, I feel like we can approve those. I mean, I, as was cited at in the work session, I took the entire time, read all of these minutes, so I'm prepared to vote on them, but if folks didn't do their homework, then maybe we should be ready for that.
I will defer to council. It has been practiced that if one person needs more time, then we do take that to a vote, but there has been requests for clarification or for feedback on several sets of minutes, so I just decided that I would pull them all and scooch them off.
And Mayor, I would certainly, of course, oblige that. I'm only saying, at least the school board interviews, we should be able to pass no problem.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
I'm gonna blank. I would assume that's the two specials.
It's the 12th and the 13th, so that would be agenda items number two and number three on consent.
And I would move, Mr. Mayor.
As the clerk said, customary, it's been, if one member asks for more time on the minutes, that we normally give more time on the minutes. I don't think this is something we need to entertain.
There has been a motion to, at least a motion moved for the June 12th and June 13th minutes, and if there's no second, then the motion would die.
Is there a second?
Okay, there is no discussion for consent agenda, so no discussion for consent. So I'll go ahead and call for the vote if everybody is in, which all the members have had a time.
That is item number two and item number three, right?
That is correct. Yes, all the members have been, had a chance to log into civic clerk, so I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Feraldi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Missions.
No.
Councilwoman Reed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Timmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer.
No.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, toggling back to public hearings, this is agenda item number eight, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cell tower lease agreement between the city, Lynchburg City Schools, and Milestone Towers LLC to place the cell tower at 3525 John Capron Road. This item was discussed during the Physical Development Committee meeting on July 8th, and Ms. Gaynor Hart, Director of Public Works, will provide a summary of the request.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are requesting approval of a lease for Milestone at the school's transportation and facilities building. Background is that we have a master marketing agreement with Milestone since 2013. We currently have three towers already built on city property, one at Perrymont Park, one at the fire station number seven at Lakeside Drive, and one on Old Ward's Road, which is near the Sheffield Elementary School. Rent and access fees, we would gain about 40% of the monthly gross rental revenue, and $25,000 site fee for the first tower and first carrier, and $5,000 for each carrier after that. Again, the lease site is 3525 John Capron Road. It is zoned appropriately, heavy industrial, and there, we are allowed to have cell sites in a zoned I-3. Access to the tower would be from Bradley Drive. Economic development reached out to all the businesses, there was no comments. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution of the lease and appropriating the funds to schools' capital for maintenance of the transportation building. That's what they have asked for the money for, is for the Transportation and Facilities Department buildings. And with that, I will take any questions. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Ms. Gaynor? Okay, is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition of this project? Are there any voicemails?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. I defer to the Chair of PDC, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was unanimously suggested by PDC, and we appreciate the work that city staff has done to put this together. Thank you.
And I make a motion.
You make a motion. May I have a second?
Typically doesn't require a second, since it's a committee move. So just Councilmember Timmer's motion to move that forward is enough.
Mayor, I would just make one point of clarification. The language of the motion says Milestone Towers LLC. The lease itself is with a different organization called Milestone Tower Limited Partnership Four, so just for purposes of our record.
What's the mission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, the proceeds of the lease are going to us or the schools?
It would go to the schools as part of the resolution.
Excellent.
There's more specifically the school's capital fund.
I was standing. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
All right, initiating vote now. The motion passes, seven zero. Agenda item number nine, consideration of adopting a resolution to approve the Blackwater CSO Tunnel Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. This item was discussed during the Finance Committee meeting earlier today. Mr. Tim Mitchell, Director of Department of Water Resources, will provide a summary of the request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of tonight's action is to secure the most cost-effective financing available for the Blackwater CSO Tunnel project. The public hearing, upon conclusion of the public hearing, will recommend adoption of a resolution that issues revenue bonds, accepts principal forgiveness, and authorizes city manager and staff to execute the appropriate documents. Just a little bit of background, the CSO Tunnel project is the largest capital project in Lynchburg's history, at least from a financial standpoint. It achieves significant environmental benefits, restores sewer capacity to the Blackwater Creek Interceptor, which serves approximately two-thirds of the city, and meets the CSO Long Term Control Plan and state consent order requirements. This project has been a massive coordination effort led by water resources and their team, and involving our state legislators, two state administrations, various regulatory agencies, engineers, contractors, and of course, city council, and many other stakeholders, in order to get this project from concept to construction and ultimately completion within an extremely tight timeframe. If everything had not happened like it had, like it did, and when it did, this project would not have been possible either financially or otherwise. So currently, as far as funding goes, we have about $107 million in appropriations for CSO-related projects. The Blackwater CSO Tunnel cost is $104.1 million, and we've worked very closely with our state delegation and two separate administrations to secure $50 million in ARPO grants from the Virginia General Assembly, requiring a $25 million local match. We confirmed with DEQ that the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund can be used as a local match. And we've worked with DEQ for the past two years on the loan and funding applications that were approved in December of 2024 by the State Water Control Board for $54.1 million for the balance of the project cost. Of the $54.1 million, the good news is $29,395,000 of that will be a loan at a 0.5% interest rate in a 25-year term. The better news is $24,705,000 of the loan will be principal forgiveness. So the $104 million project, Lynchburg's cost is $29.4 million, and this is largely possible because of the trust we've built with DEQ over the years and stakeholders to meet their schedules and commitments over CSO Long Term Control Plan and other requirements of their consent order. So our recommendation is upon conclusion of the public hearing, adopt a resolution that issues the sewer revenue bonds not to exceed $29,395,000 for a term of 25 years in a rate of 0.5% interest, enter into a funding agreement with the Virginia Resources Authority for a grant in the form of principal forgiveness for $24,705,000, and authorize the city manager and staff to execute the appropriate documents. And upon conclusion of the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Ms. Alicia, are there any voicemails?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. I defer to the chairperson of Finance Committee, what's the mission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for bringing this toward us. This was a pretty big project, and I'm excited for the tour that we're going to be able to get to do. That's one thing I keep asking for, I want to see the inside of this tunnel. I don't think that the pictures that we see do us justice with how big it is, but this is a great opportunity for us to secure the long-term financing. We need to finish this out on schedule and hopefully on budget as well, which it appears that's where we're at, with also a great interest rate of a half percent, which is phenomenal. So with that, appreciate all the work that went into this, and I'll make this a motion to approve.
No second. Cast your vote, please.
Quick comment. And this is me putting counsel on, I didn't warn anyone, and that was kind of terrible of me, but when we did a tour, you did mention us going down in the tunnel and possibly getting all of counsel. So I would just encourage all of us, if we could check our calendars to find a time where we could all go down in the tunnel together, hopefully with lots of lights and, you know, all the PPE, but I think that would be great, so.
And everybody comes out.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. Wild.
I just want to commend our staff, our city staff, for all the work they do, finding grants to cover this project. I mean, you're talking about over $100 million, and you see all over the country, cities have a problem with their water systems and rest of the catastrophe. My son's in Richmond, VCU, they couldn't use water for several days or anything, so I'm so thankful for Lynchburg City. The staff we have is amazing to do the clean water system and always find a resource to save the taxpayers of our community funds, and also for our state legislators working on that project as well. So thank you for the city for an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a great tour from Director Mitchell the other day, and still only saw the outside of it, but my personal history on combined sewer overflow goes back to 1993, when I was Steve Newman's legislative aide, and we were working on combined sewer overflow then, and I'm excited to be here at the end of this process, hopefully, and it's an expensive one, but our river is going to be a lot cleaner, and our natural resources are going to be protected, and it's really a wonderful thing for those of us who kayak and use the river regularly. So I'm very excited about this for our city and everybody downstream.
Is there any more discussion? Please cast your vote.
Initiating vote now. All right, the next section is public comment. Speakers have three minutes to speak. If you're speaking for a group, you have five. City council listens to your comments and may ask the city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions to make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking. There's no applause, cheers, or jeers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote businesses, or campaign for office. Agenda item number 10, hear from a citizen regarding civility, James Wicks. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of city council. My name is James Wicks, and I live at 415 Riverside Drive. My family and I feel so blessed to reside in Lynchburg and to have you as our city council members, and we lift each one of you up in prayer. We thank God for you, and we celebrate the work that you do to make Lynchburg a city on a hill. As you know, this time-honored phrase comes from Matthew, it's based on Matthew 5:14, where Jesus reminds all of us, "Ye are the light of the world; a city that is set on a hill cannot be hid. Neither man light a candle and put it under a bushel but on a candlestick, and it gives its light unto all that are in the house." As a council, you have a special role in spreading the light in Lynchburg. Each of you has a personal faith testimony whereby you put your heart and soul beliefs into action. This council has opportunity each meeting to set forth Christian and Lynchburg distinctives such as respect and renewal. Lynchburg people respect each other. With God's guidance, Lynchburg folk think the best about each other. They try to bring out the best in those around them. Bless you when you mirror that respect in your council interactions. Think God's compassion about one another. Encourage and celebrate one another. Raise each other up. You rise or fall as a group. Rise and raise our city up with your godly testimony, and as a united, encouraged, and respectful council. With respect comes renewal. Like many in Lynchburg, I'm a parent of a young child. I am reminded each day how I must allow Christ to renew my thoughts and my actions so that I might be the father my young eight-year-old son needs. Think of the renewals of heart and the renewals of will that Lynchburg residents have made over this hill city's long history. Men and women dedicated just like you, clinging to God and making decisions for the future that we are still benefiting from today. You know that every time you step into this chamber, that mantle of responsibility and renewal has been passed to you. Let Christ-like renewal energize your actions and your decision-making as a council. See into the future and look into the eyes of Lynchburg's youth, and be that example of hope, responsibility, respect, and renewal. My family is so grateful to call Lynchburg home and to call you our leaders. May God bless this governing body, and may God remind you moment by moment of the long-lasting impact you are making on this wonderful hill city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you.
Agenda item number 11, hear from a group representative regarding CBCC updates from the Chair of the CBCC Local Advisory Board, Justin Hensley, CBCC Local Advisory Board. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Dr. Justin Hensley, citizen of Lynchburg, and I serve as the Chair of the Central Virginia Community College Local Advisory Board. I was appointed by city council and later elected Chair by my fellow board members. I want to thank you, first of all, for the opportunity and for your ongoing service to the people of the city of Lynchburg. So I'm here tonight to reintroduce us. CBCC is your community college, serving thousands of Lynchburg residents through workforce training, academic programs. training, academic programs, and dual enrollment. Whether it's a student launching their first career, a parent returning to school, or a high schooler earning college credit early, we are here to serve. We get to tell our students, yes, you can. That message of encouragement, of possibility, is at the heart of what CBCC stands for. And I've been encouraging our board to take that same message out into our community, to remind folks that CBCC is not a backup plan, it is a launchpad. I know this council has a lot on its plate, so I'm not here to add to your burdens. I'm here to begin something I think is better, a renewed regular connection between CBCC's board and the council that appoints us. As Chair, I plan to stop by periodically, maybe about once a quarter, and offer a quick update to keep the lines of communication open and remind you that CBCC is hard at work preparing the city's future. This is an opportunity for us to reconnect and refocus because there is so much good happening at CBCC that deserves to be seen. We are training the region's skilled workforce. We're partnering with employers to meet real hiring needs. We're helping high schoolers jumpstart their college journeys and graduate debt-free. We're helping parents retrain, veterans transition, and first-generation students change the trajectory of their families. We offer short-term credentials, transfer pathways, and industry-recognized certifications all right here in the city of Lynchburg. We support local businesses and customized training. We partner with manufacturers, hospitals, small businesses, and large employers to design programs that meet real workforce needs, from industrial maintenance and healthcare to cybersecurity and logistics. When a company needs skilled workers, CBCC is often their first call. And when we train talent here, talent stays here, fueling Lynchburg's economic engine. We collaborate with K-12 districts, four-year institutions, and workforce agencies, and in everything we do, we serve the people of this city. We serve single parents trying to create a better life. We serve recent high school graduates and adults that never thought college was possible for them. We serve second chances, career changes, and lifelong learners. CBCC isn't just a place where students go, it's a place where communities grow. Our classrooms are filled with your constituents, and our mission is deeply tied to the health, success, and future of Lynchburg itself. And we've been doing this for a long time. CBCC opened its doors in nineteen sixty-seven, more than five decades of serving our region. And many of you may know graduates. Many of you in this room may be graduates. We've trained nurses, technicians, business owners, and tradespeople who built this city, and CBCC has always been part of that story, and the Local Advisory Board is here to help ensure that we continue to be. That's part of our job as board members, not just supporting the college internally, but also staying in touch with the people and leaders who represent this city. It's actually in our bylaws. We're expected to maintain strong relationships with our local jurisdictions and communicate the college's needs and accomplishments. So if we haven't stayed as visible in front of this council as we should have, that's something that I intend to fix. You'll be seeing more of us, starting with me, because we want you to be proud of what's happening at your community college. We want you to know that when CBCC wins, Lynchburg wins too. We're not asking to be remembered, we're asking to be unforgettable. And so thank you again for your service, for your past support, and for the chance to reintroduce ourselves. CBCC has been part of Lynchburg's story for more than half a century, and we're just as committed today as we were on day one. Our roots run deep in this community, and our impacts continue to grow. And with a few remaining seconds, I want to recognize several of our board members and our President, Dr. Capps, that's in with us here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Agenda item number twelve, hear from a citizen regarding speed bumps for the streets at the waters at the James, funding for the Sheriff's Department and Streets Fixed on Fifth Street, Philip Bryant. Not attendance. Agenda item number thirteen, hear from a citizen regarding city clubs, FJ Jalil. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Mr. Jalil, Lynchburg City. Counsel, let me ask you this. Why did the chess club bring a ladder to the meeting? Because they wanted to make, take their game to the next level. But when they got there, they realized half of the members were still rookies, i.e. pawns, still trying to figure out how to get to the king. Now, this little pin right here represents that I am the Vice President of Membership for COL TIC, which I'll explain in a moment. So it goes with nearly everything in life. We need to keep learning so we can move forward, keep growing so we can replace that which has become passable, obsolete, or outdated in our skills, knowledge, tools, and resources, like ChatGPT one, two, three, and four. Sure, we all need to read more, exercise more, some of it more than others, I won't look, pray more, serve more, and even love more, but nothing replaces becoming more, which enables you to do all of these things and even more, even better than before. And doing this alongside others can create a tight-knit community, providing a deep sense of belonging, such as in a family, a church, a sports team, even a chess club, always and ever striving to reach the next level together. Now, to the point of my visiting you here today, as Representative COL TIC, I invite you, your city managers, administrative leaders, and all of your employees to join me of climbing the ladder of personal development, going to the next level through City of Lynchburg Toastmasters International Club number five sixty-two, which meets at eleven AM for one hour every second Thursday of the month in the upper room at the Greater Lynchburg Bus Transit Building across from the Registrar's Elections Office. That's the one I frequent, but you could also visit the other Toastmasters Clubs that meets around the city, such as at CBCC at seven PM, I believe the first and third Thursday of each month. And you could visit us on Zoom, so you don't even have to leave the office, eleven to twelve, you'll be done and back going to lunch or at work. At any of these club meetings, you and your employees are guaranteed to grow personally and professionally. Toastmasters International Clubs provide safe, constructive, and encouraging environments to help everyone to remove the bad speaking habits we acquire, such as saying um, uh, and so, yeah, and, 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 very good, very nice, very small, very large, very scary, saying very for everything. The friendly evaluations of your speeches provide immediate succinct and personal feedback that reveals to you exactly where you could make improvements. Not only that, you could also be the one to use our device that times everyone's speeches, or you could choose the word of the day and strengthen your listening skills as you listen for who can use the term off the cuff during the hour. You could evaluate one's personal speech. Five minutes.
Time was up.
You signed up as an individual. If you're representing a group, it's up to the council for two additional minutes.
Okay, two minutes.
You could choose the word of the day and strengthen your listening skills as you listen for who has used the term off the cuff. You could evaluate one person's speech or be the general evaluator for everything in the meeting. You can even hone your leadership skills by hosting the Toastmasters meeting or being the go-to person that greets and advises all of your new visitors or regular members. Toastmasters offers a handful of curriculum pathways for personal development, which you can accomplish at your own pace. And if you're willing and ready, you may participate in our regional speaking contests, which have various levels, or simply help facilitate them as a contest evaluator and more. Because the opportunities for personal development are diverse and abundant, I urge you to encourage one another and all of your employees, resulting in benefits to all involved, to visit our local Toastmasters International Club. Take care.
Thank you.
Agenda item number fourteen, hear from a group representative regarding a kinder, gentler Lynchburg, reading the vision and making it plain, Dr. Beth White, Citizens United for Lynchburg. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Dr. Beth White, Citizens United for Lynchburg, Ward Three. For some reason, my mind went blank there. Good evening, members of council, welcome back from your summer break. Over the past three years, Lynchburg City Council has been called the best reality show in Virginia. The name-calling, interruptions, and insults, not to mention social media attacks, are reminiscent of middle school, not local government. Can you imagine if your time and energy that you put into these attacks, secret meetings, and backroom deals instead had been spent on actively governing this city? So today, we have the first meeting after summer break. Just like thousands of students, you get to start off this new year with a clean slate. My question is, what are you going to do with it? What is your vision for our city? Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen says, where there is no vision, the people perish. In June, former Mayor Whitaker addressed the lack of a vision statement. I can understand his concerns because I really haven't seen much of one either. When you have no vision, according to Webster's Dictionary, that means you're blind. Blind people can't lead anyone, they have to be led. Blind people cannot govern a city effectively. Habakkuk two-two says to write the vision and make it plain upon the tables. We have a five-year comprehensive plan, but what is our one-year plan? Where do you see us in one year from now? What goals do we collectively have to make our city better than we are now? Let me share some thoughts with you. One, we need to stop the noise and listen respectfully to each other. In the words of the great lyricist of my day, and I'm going to really try not to finish this quote, in the words of the great lyricist of my day, Vanilla Ice, we need to stop, collaborate, and listen. My dad always said, we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. We need to listen twice as much as we talk. Number two, let's work together, united, for the good of our city, regardless of party. I have no doubt that you each love Lynchburg. You wouldn't be sitting where you are now if you didn't. But so do thousands of others in this city. You know what? We have challenges. We all know that, that's no secret. No city is perfect. But these challenges are not caused by Democrats or Republicans, nor will they be fixed by a single party. They will only be met and solved by all of us working together. Three, let's work with LCS and the School Board to help our children succeed. Instead of always criticizing LCS and/or the School Board, which, by the way, you appoint, give them the tools that they need to be able to do their job successfully. You may say, well, I don't like the way they spend money. Well, that's okay, because you know what? School Board probably doesn't like the way you spend our money either. Four, speaking of schools, when was the last time that you had a conversation with students, with kids? I would like to see a youth forum where kids from every background, race, or socioeconomic status are brought together, either by neighborhoods, wards, or schools, and given an opportunity to discuss their concerns. These children are the future of our city. You are also their representative. Don't you need to listen to them too? Five, have a citizens' town hall, meet with your constituents, not just to talk to hear yourselves talk, but show up to just listen. Take notes so that you don't forget what you're being told. I know even at my age, I forget, and I'm liable to forget something as soon as I sit down in my seat. You got to take notes. Six, work with the Detention Center in Blue Ridge Regional Jail. I know in Campbell County, they had a work release program where you saw people who were inmates out there picking up trash. Is that something we can institute here, make our city prettier, but let those who are incarcerated, make them get out there and do the work? Seven, ask the youth what they want to see in our city. I hear all the time from young people that there is nothing to do here. Well, maybe instead of living vicariously through them and only providing stuff that we liked at that age, maybe it's time to ask them what they would like to see. Finally, I would like to ask those citizens who believe in the power of prayer, and I realize that not everyone in the city does, so those who do, let me ask you this, when was the last time that you sincerely prayed for our city council, our city staff, and our city as a whole? Scripture commands us to do so. To our church leadership across the city, regardless of denomination, wouldn't it be great to pray for our city for just one day?
Agenda item number fifteen, hear from a group representative regarding halfway house operating Ward One residential area, Glenn Robinson, concerned residents of Ward One. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Glenn Robinson, resident of Ward One. Here tonight representing the concerned residents of Ward One regarding a home on Mimosa Drive. This home is a rental property whose owner does not live in Ward One. Recently, he secured a one-year lease of this property to Sobrius Treatment Center, an addiction recovery program based in Galax, Virginia, which is currently operating a halfway house at this residence, providing addiction recovery services to several unrelated adult males. According to the State Code of Virginia, any program calling itself a recovery residence must be accredited or chartered by a recognized credentialing entity and obtain certification by the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. The most updated list of current certified recovery residencies in Virginia for both Oxford and VA are approved housing, which are the only two legal kinds of recovery residencies in the Commonwealth, does not list Sobrius Treatment Center or any other legal entity Sobrius operates under as approved, certified, or legally credentialed. Currently, there are twelve such recovery homes within the city of Lynchburg that have been approved and registered through the state. Sobrius is not one of them. The residents of Ward One are deeply concerned about this. Before we're expressing our concerns, we want to be clear about our support of such organizations that are doing what they can to help individuals in recovery. My heart for those battling addiction comes from years of personally and sacrificially investing in people facing similar struggles. Nevertheless, most residents dwelling in addiction recovery homes are there because they have been appointed by the courts to do so. Consequently, the residents of our neighborhood have not been assured of their level of safety, nor the history of incarceration of the men who live there and who also walk our neighborhood unsupervised. As a result, this seriously threatens the level of felt safety for parents, women, and children in our neighborhood. This is especially concerning to me because this home directly faces my backyard. When the residents are home, they are constantly outside on their open-faced porch and walking along my property line, some days from five in the morning until at least ten o'clock in the evening. This makes it impossible for my four young children to enter our backyard, where they are used to playing with other neighborhood kids. I have communicated my concerns with the landlord and have been given no assurance that he is committed to building a privacy fence to mitigate this concern. In addition, Bedford Hills Elementary School is located within three-fourths of a mile, and a school bus stop is within three hundred feet of this residence. Just over two years ago, Bedford County denied Sobrius Treatment Center a special-use permit due to the concerns of the potential home's proximity to an elementary school. This reveals that Sobrius will not stop or be concerned with how this affects the communities in which they seek to dwell in. Third, many residents are now faced with the question of declining property values because of the proximity to this recovery home. Respectfully, which of you would feel comfortable investing in the purchase of a property in such close proximity to a halfway house? We are asking tonight for your commitment as stewards of this city to make your top priority to do the following. Number one, help protect the men, women, and especially children of this neighborhood, some of whom happen to be mine. While I truly want these individuals to have another chance and be free from addiction, I also want my kids to feel safe in their own backyard and for the men, women, and kids of our neighborhood to feel safe as well. Right now, they don't. Two, commit to investigate and pursue recourse regarding Sobrius's uncertified and non-credentialed use of this property. This would include investigating any loopholes that may have been missed that are allowing this to happen. For example, it appears the current landlord had found some loopholes last year by violating the city's ordinance when he had eight unrelated men living at the same location. What can be done to prevent this and correct this? Three, commit to working with state representatives to seek both creative and legislative housing solutions that integrate well within our city. One solution could be to create healthy living areas near transit zones or community services, where recovery homes and similar uses are encouraged and where operators are provided incentives such as small grants, fee waivers, and tax abatements by choosing non-residential areas. These types of solutions expand the current laws rather than restrict them. Please see this as an opportunity to do good for the residents of our city who live here permanently and seek to provide logical and reasonable solutions for those entering our city on a temporary basis so that living together can be done in peace. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen, hear from a citizen regarding a new season, Deborah Trevesker. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Deborah Trevesker, Holland Street in Lynchburg, a grateful resident of Lynchburg. Seeing this is the beginning of a new season for city council, I'd like to read from an old commentary, Bible commentary by the well-respected Matthew Henry regarding citizens or believers' responsibility towards their government officials and the spiritual warfare that's been going on since ancient times. Quote, "Our first step to victory in the spiritual warfare is to trust only in the mercy and grace of God. All who trust in themselves will soon be cast down. Believers triumph in God and His revelation of Himself to them, by which they distinguish themselves from those that live without God in the world. Those who make God and His name their praise may make God and His name their trust." This was the case when the pride and power of Jewish unbelief and pagan idolatry fell before the sermons and lives of the humble believers in Jesus. This is the case in every conflict with our spiritual enemies when we engage them in the name, the spirit, and the power of Christ. And this will be the case of the last day when the world with the prince of it shall be brought down and fall, but believers risen from the dead through the resurrection of the Lord shall stand and set up our banners in the name of the Lord our God, assured that by the saving strength of His right hand we shall be conquerors over every enemy." End of quote. So I just want to say I thank God for each of you serving on city council. And I promise to pray for you, that God will protect you and give you a heart motivation to truly work for the public good and to line up every decision with the word of God. And if you do, that He will crown your every effort with success. Living in Communist China for nine years, I saw firsthand how people suffer when God's word is ignored and opposed. I trust that the city council will follow biblical principles and cause the people of Lynchburg to prosper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 17. Hear from a group representative regarding Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, Inc. Value of Services Request to be reinstated in city budget. Deborah Silverman, Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living, Inc. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Okay, actually, my name is Margaret McCanna. Deborah Silverman was ill, and she asked me to come in her stead. My name is Margaret McCanna. Although I live in Amherst County, I work here in the city of Lynchburg, and I'm proud to come in every day and provide these services. We are the Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living. We are your local nonprofit area agency on aging. We represent the almost 22% of the city's population who are over the age of 60. We represent persons living with disabilities and their caregivers, your constituents. We were shocked and remain very concerned that the city council cut 100% of funding to CVACL this coming year without any notice after 50 years of support. CVACL's major funding source is the Federal Older Americans Act, which mandates certain services and supports in all jurisdictions and implies the support of those jurisdictions for match funding. We cover five areas in the region: Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, and Campbell Counties, and the city of Lynchburg. Each of these jurisdictions provides support and has committed to funding in 2026, except for the city of Lynchburg. As far as we can tell, every jurisdiction in the state has committed to funding of their local area agencies on aging. And I would venture to guess that every area in the nation has done so as well. Local funding is critical to matching the federal dollars allocated for the Older Americans Act services and supports we provide. Removal of this funding jeopardizes literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in support to local seniors, persons with disabilities, and their caregivers. Last year, CVACL spent 400, let me rephrase that, invested $495,000 to support seniors living in Lynchburg alone. We provided 600 in-home needs assessments for older adults, 8,415 home-delivered meals through our Meals on Wheels for Seniors services, 1,331 trips for medical support, along with a number of other services, including a nutrition and education site, offering meals, recreation, education, and peer support for older adults, personal care for the frail and the elderly, care coordination, options counseling, senior cool care that provides window air conditioners or fans to help prevent heat-related illnesses, Farm Market Fresh, which offers seniors the opportunities to purchase fresh produce from the community market, and so much more. I do have lists of programs available to you if you would like them. We also pay over $17,000 a year in property taxes. This cut means fewer services, more isolation, and greater risk to our most vulnerable neighbors. This is not about numbers on a budget sheet. This funding helps a widow receive a hot meal that keeps her healthy and independent and living at home, a low-income senior with vision difficulties to get a ride to the doctor or the pharmacy when there's no other option, isolated older adults get checks that help prevent hospitalization or worse. These services are not luxuries, they are lifelines. And we have to believe that city council members were unaware of the impact of CVACL in the community, the implied commitment to support the federal obligation of these services to our elderly, and the potential threat the loss of this match funding represents for your constituents. We have requested in writing and are requesting again now that city council reconsider and amend the budget to reinstate the $25,000 cut to CVACL funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 18. Agenda item number 18 was from Heather Legg. She previously signed up, but let us know today she'd have scheduled a conflict and wouldn't be here. So moving on to agenda item number 19. Hear from a group representative regarding limitations. Greg Berry, city elders. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and city council members. My name is Greg Berry, and I'm a resident of Ward 3, and I represent the Lynchburg City Elders. To God and His Son, Jesus Christ, be all the praise, honor, and glory. In Lamentations, we read in chapter 2, "My eyes fail from weeping; I am in torment within. My heart is poured out on the ground because my people are destroyed, because children and infants faint in the streets of the city, as they faint like the wounded in the streets of the city, as their lives ebb away in their mother's arms." I know I am not the only one in these chambers with a broken heart for our city and especially for our children. Haven't we lost too many of our family and friends to violence, substance of use, and destructive agendas perpetrated against our youth? I know that most of you on council has the same concerns as I do, not just for our children, but for every citizen, including the elderly. However, just two days ago, I called dispatch to request a welfare check on one of our elderly citizens. I won't go into details about why I thought the welfare check was necessary, but after giving a huge amount of information about the situation, including the lady's name, address, phone number, car, possibility of violence, as well as the reason for my concern, I was informed that the information would be passed along. I inquired what exactly that meant. Did that mean that an officer would be sent to check on the citizen or not? The young lady said that she couldn't tell me whether someone would go or not. After expressing my extreme disappointment with the lack of response by the Lynchburg Police Department, I told her to disregard. I took appropriate precautions, and I went to the lady's residence myself, where I was able to visibly verify that she was safe. If this is the typical response of our police department when services are requested, then perhaps there's an even greater need for the constitutional militia than previously thought, or even as some council members want to admit. The purpose of this is not to simply issue a complaint. City council has a short hiatus, and I pray that everyone had an opportunity to refresh and renew. Perhaps we need a new perspective. I'd like to tell you about Romans, Chapter 16, starting in verse 17. "Now I beseech you, brethren, mark them that cause division and offenses, contrary to the doctrine which you have learned, and avoid them; for they are such as serve not our Lord Jesus Christ, but their own belly, and by good words and fair speeches deceive the hearts of the simple. For your obedience is come abroad unto all men. I am glad therefore on your behalf, but yet I would have you wise unto that which is good and simple concerning evil. And the God of peace shall bruise Satan's heel under your feet shortly. The grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with you." How can we solve any problems unless we quit allowing ourselves to be divided? Divided by selfish ambitions and petty jealousies, divided by pride? Isn't it time to put aside all of our dislikes and offenses that we may have suffered and start thinking about the people you have sworn to serve? If you cannot reconcile with each other and join forces for the good of our community, then you are not serving the entire community or God, but the evil one, the thief who cometh not but for to steal and to kill and to destroy. My fervent prayer for each of you is that you seek God and His community. I know we have had a lot of conflict in the past. I know there's been a lot of bloodletting on all sides. Bloodletting leads to bloodletting. I implore you, beg you, and I will do whatever I can to help each of us reconcile with each other. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next.
I'm issuing to 53B11 of our Rules of Procedure. I'm gonna make a motion that we add to the agenda in our next work session, seeing if there's a way we can figure out restoring funding to CVACL. I'll make that as a motion. I have the floor, Mr. Mayor. I made a motion, and I have a second. We have rules. We need to follow the rules and go by the rules. I'm not angry. I'm just tired of you getting interrupted. It's been happening all night. No, I just think that it's prudent for us to look at the $25,000 based on what we heard with some of the revenue projections today. And, you know, I think it sounds to me like there's a lot that we're getting with that small match. And I'm very familiar with a lot of those services you guys provide. Frankly, I don't even know where it was. I didn't even know it was cut. So I appreciate you and all of you that brought this to our attention to let us know that that happened. And I'm glad that you're here again tonight because your persistence has put it in the forefront of my mind that we need to figure out how to fix that. And I thank you, Councilmember Reed, for seconding my motion.
All I was trying to say to my esteemed colleague is just ask for it to be put on the next work session. You don't have to go through the whole rigmarole. I mean, we have time, and we'll get to it. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Missions, thank you for doing it. I'm glad you're doing this. I had to inquire of staff as well to find out about this, what they're doing. I knew the Area Agency on Aging. I remember back from the '90s working with that, but the name change kind of threw me off, and I hadn't understood that there was a cut. I know you weren't in the room when they were talking, Mr. Benda, but it is on my heart that we try to restore that funding as well as one of two people, maybe more up here, that are over 60. An area agency on aging is a good thing. And having served Meals on Wheels, Meals on Wheels, I really like that ministry as well. So I hope we will find a way to put that funding back. I never knew it was being cut.
Yes, Ms. Reed, please.
Yes, I was, Council Mission beat me to the punch, but I agree. I definitely support trying to find a way to support this program. They actually are located... Where are you? You're right across from my other job, and I see who you serve. And it's very important what you do. So I think we all can get behind trying to figure out how we can help you and get that funding back in place for you. So I hope that we can do that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Benda. And I know you'll work hard to get this back in. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, there has been a motion and a second. So have you to start the vote on that now?
Yes, please.
It says, the rule says, "Any issue raised by the public which the council wishes to consider may be put on the agenda for a future council meeting by a majority vote," just going by our Rules of Procedure.
All right, initiate the vote now.
I'm in favor, but I'm in something else.
You should be able to say it without bugger. Thank you. The motion passes 6-1. All right, we move along to general business. The next section is general business. It includes new items for discussion. Agenda item number 20, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the FY 2026 General Fund Human Services, Social Services Budget and appropriating $94,909 to establish a kinship navigator program. This item was discussed during the Finance Committee meeting earlier today. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I defer to the chair of that committee, Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to have Ms. Watson come up and just kind of explain to everybody what this is about. And I think this is a really great, great thing.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and members of the city council. This is, the Lynchburg Human Services has been awarded $94,909 in grant funding for fiscal year 2026 through the Virginia Department of Social Services. These funds would allow the establishment of a kinship navigator program, which would provide critical support to kinship caregivers in our community, such as grandparents, aunts, uncles, older siblings, individuals raising children outside of the normal foster care system. The funding would be used to hire a dedicated kinship navigator, as well as marketing outreach, resource development, and referral services for kinship families in our community. Really, we want to kind of use this as something to kind of navigate that gap in services to these individuals who step up selflessly to help their family members. This award requires no local match, and Lynchburg was one of five agencies selected in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
So, and something that Ms. Watson mentioned earlier, this is 100% federally funded right now?
Yes.
And this is a type of federal funding? I can't remember what you said it was.
Title IV.
Title IV funds that typically we end up continuing to get year after year. And I believe that she also said that they'll be notifying the employee that it'll be a, it is a grant-funded position. It's subject to continuing grant funding. But appreciate the work you guys did putting this in. I think this is absolutely a gap that needs to be filled right now. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Yep. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
I'll just speak to what we said in the finance and echo what Council Mission said. It's a crucial position that needs to be filled. You know, when we ask, it's so important for children to try to stay, if possible, within families, if at all possible. Obviously, foster families are so important. But if you do have a family member that's willing to step in and fill that gap, that is huge as well. And to have someone that navigate that for a family member that's not expecting an extra person in their home and help them kind of walk through that process, just like we do with foster parents, that is so important. So this is a great position to be able to fill. So again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this is helpful to those families.
Is there any more discussion? Let's vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Our next meeting is September 9 at 4:00.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second. I know, I know. Meeting is adjourned.